With the exception of Mayor Potem Rozansky and Council members Daigle and Nichols, all council members are present.
Mr. Mayor, at the last study session, we had a report on the Upper Bay dredging project and out of that presentation came a request from the City Council, I think it was Councilman Nichols, that wanted a similar type of report in scope about the Lower Bay. So Tom Ross Miller is going to provide that.
Thank you, Homer. Mayor Webb, council members, a few weeks ago, I told you about the Upper Bay dredging project and so I thought I'd give you some more detail about the Lower Bay dredging and a lot of related topics. What I'd like to talk about this evening is start it out with why we really need to do dredging in the Lower Bay, give you a short historical perspective of dredging in the Bay, talk to you a bit about the comprehensive sediment management program that we've developed with our partners in the watershed, and then talk about a proposed Lower Bay dredging project that we're working on with the Army Corps of Engineers and a strategy to get it funded. And also to tell you about a grant that we've received for development of a harbor area management plan that also addresses some of the eelgrass issues that we're dealing with here in the harbor. Talk about the renewal of our regional general permit and of course, lastly, the Balboa Island Beach replenishment project that's under preparation right now. Next. Well, to start it off, do we really need to dredge? This is a relatively small sailboat in the main channel and it's hard to ground. And it shows that certainly the main navigation channel needs to be dredged and that there certainly are safety issues here in the harbor that need to be addressed. In fact, the Army Corps of Engineers survey estimates that we have over 900,000 cubic yards of sediment that's above design grade in the harbor that needs to be removed. I might add that the harbor was never actually fully dredged to the Army Corps of Engineers' design standards, but that's what we're measuring to.
Does that 900,000 yards include the channel all the way out to the end of the jetty? Or is that just the turning basin?
It's the entire Lower Bay federal navigation channel areas that is from project line to project line, not just the channels, but under the moorings also.
And Tom, how does that 900,000 cubic yards compare with what they're going to dredge out of the Upper Bay?
In the Upper Bay, we're going to remove about 2.1 million cubic yards. Next slide. To go back in time, it all started in about 1919 when the city and the county developed plans to improve the navigability of the harbor. This plan sheet from 1919 shows a project that was proposed that would build a dam at Bitter Point, which is about where Cappy's Restaurant is today, build a new outlet for the San Ana River that goes straight out instead of meandering through the Lower Bay, and dredge the main channel, which is referred to as the county channel back in those days, the city channel being this channel right here along the peninsula, and extend the entrance jetty. Next slide. Of course, like today, they had trouble funding such a project. They were looking for a half a million dollars and they passed out this handbill and they convinced the voters to vote yes on the bond issue with the hopes to get commerce into the harbor. Commerce never happened for a lot of reasons that the mayor can share with us. He's an expert with that historical perspective, but I won't go into that right now. Next slide. So the dredging timeline really started with private developers in 1906 who spent about $470,000 in the Lower Bay developing some of the islands between 1906 and 1920. The city of Newport Beach spent $450,000 in 1916 on improvement that included dredging that city channel that I showed on the last slide. And then that bond issue was passed in 1919 where they picked up a half a million dollars plus about $85,000 from the sale of some of the dredge material. And then the real dredging really started after the passing of that bond issue. Between 1919 and 1930, about 1,200,000 cubic yards were dredged from the Lower Bay and placed on the Balboa Peninsula. Then there was another big rush of dredging between '33 and '35 that placed another 1,100,000 at West Newport and came out of the Lower Bay. The important thing to note here is that this material was all really nice sandy material that came from the San Ana River. And the pesky old harbor entrance, which caused grief for decades, had to be dredged yet again in 1935. You'll notice that there was no maintenance dredging until 1981 because the San Ana River, as I had mentioned earlier, was diverted out of the harbor. San Diego Creek did not flow into the harbor at this point. And again, the harbor entrance needed to be dredged. In 1998, following the disastrous winter of '97 where the federal government and the state declared Orange County a disaster area, we got the Army Corps of Engineers to come into Newport Bay on an emergency cleanup to clean up what's called the Upper Bay Channel between Linda Isle, bay shores, and Harbor Island and a portion of the main channel here to the tune of about 164,000 cubic yards. They did that as an emergency project. And then lastly, in the timeline, just a couple of years ago, in '03, the Army Corps of Engineers dredged about 43,000 cubic yards from the entrance channel Corona del Mar Bend, the east side of Balboa Island, and adjacent to Collins Isle. I thought I should add into the timeline some dredging not relative to the main channel. It is relative to the regional general permit, which allows up to about 20,000 cubic yards per year of dredging between the bulkhead and the pierhead lines. That dredging is the responsibility of the property owner and it's pretty significant when you look at the numbers. Since 1976, when we started keeping records of the regional general permit work, there was about 170,000 cubic yards of material that was dredged and disposed at LA3 and then another 187,000 cubic yards that was dredged and placed on in-beach beaches. So what history told us was the river made a big impact on Lower Newport Bay prior to 1920, putting a lot of nice sand in the harbor, which was later used to build the islands and to build our beaches on the peninsula in West Newport. The harbor entrance continually, to this day, gets sand from the littoral zone into the harbor entrance to the tune of about 15,000 cubic yards a year as an annual average and needs to be cleaned out. And until 1969, that disastrous flood, San Diego Creek did not flow into the Upper Bay and the Lower Bay. And San Diego Creek watershed is quite different than the San Ana River. It doesn't provide us with any sand. It provides us with a lot of silt and clay load. And unfortunately, that kind of material does not have any beneficial reuse in the harbor and needs to be removed and taken to the ocean disposal site at a significant Now that I've talked about some history, I thought I should tell you about the fact that all of that maintenance is really not a lot of benefit to the Bay without a very comprehensive program with our watershed partners that includes source control. And we've been working with our partners on doing things like building foothill debris and sediment control basins. About nine out of the 13 that have been planned have been constructed. We've been doing agricultural best management practice implementation in the watershed on the ag land that's still left. Channel stabilization is a huge thing. Right now, most of the sediment that comes into the Upper Bay comes from stream bank and bottom erosion. And our watershed partners up in the Lake Forest area at Serrano Creek is one of the biggest sources of sediment erosion that comes into the Bay and that we're working on trying to solve that issue right now. We also constructed three in-channel sediment control basins in San Diego Creek to collect the coarser material before it gets into the Upper Bay. And then the in-beach basins collect the fine-grained sediment before it travels down into the Lower Bay. The in-beach basins have been full for a number of years. We're actually in violation of the sediment TMDL with the Regional Water Quality Control Board because those basins are full. And the Upper Bay project that I told you about last time is going to correct that situation. And then I should also mention that construction site best management practices to control sediment is also an important part of the program. Next slide. We worked with our partners, and you can see a long list of them in this 10-year-old fact sheet, to do a lot of those projects in the Upper Bay to control sediment. They included several dredging projects, both in San Diego Creek and in the Upper Bay, and best management practices on agricultural and developing properties, flood control improvements, channel stabilization. And the bottom line is that we've spent about $145 million in the watershed trying to control sediment from getting into the Bay. 10 years ago, we were starting to build an annuity to fund future maintenance of in-beach projects. And the only deposit we've had in that annuity is about $3.8 million in the Skinner Robinson Fund, which was derived from the American Trader Incident. I thought for our viewing audience, I should also talk about where does all that sediment go? We're talking millions of cubic yards. And if it's greater than 80% sand, we're required to try and use it on local beach. It of course has to meet certain quality criteria, but the first screening mechanism that we look at is the grain size. If it's less than 80% sand, it goes out for ocean disposal. We're working statewide with Department of Booting and Waterways to get that standard relaxed so that we can have more beneficial reuse of sand, putting it in nearshore zone and letting the ocean waves sort it out and bring the coarse material on to the shoreline and the finer material gets winnowed further offshore is what we're trying to achieve on a lot of projects. A lot of folks have asked us, where is LA3? Here's the harbor entrance and it's about four nautical miles out into the Newport Submarine Canyon. Up until just this January, we used the interim site and we hired U.S. Geological Survey to do a bathymetric study out in the Newport Submarine Canyon to tell us what the canyon looks like. You can see there's several deep arms of the canyon. And when we developed this site three decades ago, we tried to get it out into this flatter alluvial plain out here rather than in the canyon. So we moved this site to better fit those criteria. I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but I just wanted to show that LA3 has been used every year since 1976 and it's typically used for that regional general permit, small quantities interspersed with some large cleanout quantities, like in '87 of about 1.2 million cubic yards from big projects in the Upper Bay. Next slide. So that brings us to this new project that we're trying to develop with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've looked at a condition survey of the entire harbor that the Army Corps did. This entire area in between these dotted lines is the area that the Corps has responsibility for in dredging. And we found based on reviewing their survey results that this area outlined in red was our highest priority for removing sediment. The project that is defined by dredging the main channel to minus 15 and side channels and the anchorage to minus 12 is about 400,000 cubic yards. Not all of that 900,000 cubic yards, but enough to give us safe navigation in the channel. We're estimating that that's about a $4 million project. I'm going to have Larry Paul come up and talk to you about some more details of this project and our strategy that we developed.
Mayor Webb and council members, I'm Larry Paul. I'm a consultant for the city and I'd like this opportunity to just kind of talk to you briefly about putting together this federal strategy for Lower Newport Bay dredging. Recently, we had a meeting here at the city with the Corps of Engineers, District Commander, Colonel Alex Dornstetter and his staff to talk about this very issue. How can we put the pieces together on this? They informed us, and we already knew, there was no federal money that's currently available. And that this first phase of the project, the original Lower Bay dredging that was started by the Corps, hit a snag with this testing protocol that the city went ahead and took head-on and resolved that protocol, that testing protocol issue. The Colonel and his staff expressed a very strong willingness to help us in implementing this strategy, which we think can happen in '07. Basically, the next slide will kind of cover our overarching strategy and the logic behind it. The federal channel was partially dredged in '03 and the project was discontinued because of this sediment contamination issue, which has now been resolved. The residual federal funding for this, and they call it an operation and maintenance project, it's their funding source. When they stop a project or a project can't go further, with the existing funding for that project, they shift it or reprogram it to another project within the region, say California. And so that's what had taken place in this case. The Upper Newport Bay dredging is scheduled to begin, like it already has, I think, in some cases, they've got the dredge in place already. The dredging contractor is on-site for the project and will remain on-site for the project for about two years. That's the length of this particular Upper Bay dredging. The Lower Bay needs to be dredged and we're going to continue with our federal dredging, pushing the federal dredging responsibilities to eliminate the existing shoaling that is a hazard to navigation. Then, as Tom mentioned, the project cost for the Corps to do this continued or interrupted project is about $4 million. Now, what was presented to the Colonel and his staff members and also subsequently was presented to the division, which is in San Francisco, and also was presented to one of the headquarters chief civilians for the U.S. Army Corps Headquarters in Washington City when he came out here, was that. This project is $4 million. If you have a dredging operation underway, federal dredging operation underway in the Upper Bay, there is no need for mobilization, which comes at a price tag of approximately $1 million. If the city was in a position to contribute some additional funding with the above, the federal cost could be reduced to $2 million. That would complete a $4 million project with savings and participation. The Lower Bay is, as Tom mentioned, is a component of the larger comprehensive watershed approach currently underway. And with the completion of the Lower Bay dredging and with the Upper Bay dredging, the federal channel maintenance is probably not going to be needed for the next 20 years. This is based on the Upper Bay economic studies on that. So the bottom line is for the Corps to continue their project valued at approximately $4 million, if we can find a way of getting it done for $2 million on their part, we feel very positive that we could come up with a reprogramming effort through the Corps' process toward the end of this fiscal year in order to get this project underway.
How many cubic yards is in the red area for this project?
Approximately 400,000 cubic yards.
And Larry, when you say the fiscal year, then is that about October timeframe?
Well, actually, the strategy includes reprogramming, so that would be for fiscal year, federal fiscal year '06, if that's possible. The city's congressional request also asks for $4 million for '07. So we're hedging our bets. We're asking for it twice. Once is a reprogram for '06. If that doesn't happen, then in '07.
But the city's fiscal year is different than the federal fiscal year.
That's correct.
So what is the time, when does the fiscal year start?
They're in their '06 fiscal year right now, which ends on September 30.
I also mentioned in the beginning that I wanted to talk about the regional general permit renewal because it is an important part of that comprehensive dredging project for the Lower Bay and it's something that we're deeply involved in right now. And try and differentiate between the Army Corps of Engineers dredging of the main navigation channels and a regional general permit dredging, which allows dredging between the pierhead and bulkhead lines and adjacent to the docks that are in the city. The city is also in our application for a regional general permit, asking for coverage of dock construction projects and repair projects that essentially redo docks to the new standards that we'll be bringing before the council in a few weeks. It really is a great process for our property owners in the city in that they come to us to get a permit to dredge. We put together some information that the agencies require, like CALERPA, eelgrass surveys, and grain size analysis that the property owner provides. And we put all the paperwork through to the resource agencies, saving the property owners a lot of time, money, and frustration because they don't have to do some additional chemical analyses work and hire consultants to process permits through the individual permit process, which can take six months to two years sometimes to get through. So the process, although not perfect, certainly has shortened the timeframe. We've had some come through in as short as a month, but the typical permit turns around in three to six months. And the Coastal Commission staff in our recent negotiations has told us that they're going to work hard to keep that turnaround at a month, which they have been able to do a few times in the past. Next slide. Our regional general permit did expire and all projects that were permitted under it were required to be completed by January 24th, just about a month ago. We've been working on the renewal process for about two years and we finally overcome most of the major obstacles. One of the major obstacles was the presence of some pollutants like DDT in the sediments in the harbor. And so we had to go through some bioassay and bioaccumulation tests to show that the levels were not critical enough to cause problems when they were dredged or during the dredging process or when they're deposited out at the LA3 disposal site or when they were reused at beaches in the harbor. That process was quite difficult and we actually even had to develop a new method for amphipod survival testing, which was finally accepted by EPA. And in fact, they helped us ensure that all the other agencies accepted it also. The renegotiated regional general permit has been approved by the agencies in principle. Some of the details that we're still putting together is that NOAA Fisheries has agreed to write a detailed procedure for the eelgrass divers and the dredgers so that they'll understand the process that we have to undergo about changes in the monitoring protocol. Next slide, please. We are also, as I mentioned earlier, getting the Coastal Commission staff on board with us to shorten the process and to allow for dock construction that comply with our standards. The Regional Water Quality Control Board has also agreed to issue us a programmatic 401 certification for the project. And there's a few projects in the harbor that have more than 500 cubic yards of sand that could be beneficially reused. And we've convinced the agencies to increase our allowance to 1,000 cubic yards for those kinds of projects. We're working on the formal submittal of our application to the agencies, even though we've negotiated all the terms of the agreements. And we think that all of the boards and commissions that have to approve the deals that we've made with staff will do their job by the end of April. An important part of those negotiations has been that of the potential damage to eelgrass habitat during the dredging. habitat during the dredging process. There was a number of agencies that felt that we couldn't do precision dredging. This particular slide in the background shows one of the local dredgers dredging around an eelgrass bed, where they got as close as three feet from an eelgrass bed on one side and 13 feet on another side, and were able to dredge it without any loss of the eelgrass. And so we demonstrated to them that we could do it and we could maintain this harbor without causing problems with an important habitat. Also, as part of that eelgrass program, we have applied for and received a grant to develop a harbor area management plan. We refer to that as a HAMP. And we're trying to develop that to ensure that all the beneficial uses in the harbor that includes swimming, boating, safe navigation, are not lost at the expense of another one like eelgrass. So we're trying to balance the beneficial uses of the harbor, and we've got all the resources, agencies to buy into that general concept. And in fact, they are going to provide us a lot of support in putting together the HAMP. Next slide.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It seems to me like a catch-22 situation. The more silt that comes into the Lower Bay, the lower the water level, and probably the easier it is for eelgrass to grow because it needs that sunlight. So then, once it grows, are you going to ever be able to reclaim it again by dredging it?
That's correct. The eelgrass prefers growing in a depth of about minus 2 to minus 8, mean low water. And as that sediment develops in that range, it does give, promotes eelgrass growth. And that's a good question, leading a perfect segue into this slide, is that we've monitored where eelgrass is growing, and we're going to, we have in the budget to do additional monitoring because what we'd like to do is develop a baseline of eelgrass. And that baseline will take into consideration the high years and the low years. This last year, we lost about half of all the eelgrass shown in this slide from 2004. And when we establish that baseline, we'll be able to define what's required to keep the essential fish habitat in the harbor. And I've thrown out a number to the agencies that I think 25 acres is a good baseline for that essential fish habitat. And right here, what we're showing is about 140 acres of eelgrass. So what we're going to try and do with the HAMP is, if we have over 25 acres of eelgrass or whatever number we settle on, we'll be allowed to do maintenance dredging projects without mitigating for it. So that's the strategy in developing this project.
Tom, how did you come up with the 25-acre number?
For several decades, there were, eelgrass ranged from four to 25 acres in the Lower Bay with very poor water quality conditions, and the fish habitat survived through that time period. And so we just took the upper-end number and said, you know, that's what made it through our bad times with really bad water quality. Now that we've improved water quality and have been able to demonstrate that we can grow more, I think we can sustain that with existing conditions.
Thank you.
I thought I'd throw in a slide for another form of dredging that we practice here in the harbor, and that's pushing up sand from the low tide line up to create a larger dry beach. Wind and wave erosion and a lot of people traffic on our public beaches, especially around Balboa Island, caused the sand to slough off into the bay. We're working with Councilman Selich and the BIIA members to select seven locations, which you see in this slide, where we'll be pushing that sand back up onto the beach. We don't want to add new sand into these areas because it'll fill in some of the slip, adjacent slip areas, and we don't want to cause problems with safe navigation. But we do want to balance safe navigation with recreational use of our beaches. And that's going to be part of that HAMP study, too, developing that balance. We also, in working with our dredging problems in the harbor, try to take as, find as much opportunistic sand in the harbor as we can. At this location, Channel Reef, in the entrance channel, you can see that sand is accumulated under these docks to the point that they're not usable. We have been working with that homeowners association in trying to put together a project where we would take some of this sand and use it on other beaches such as North Bayfront and Balboa Island, where there are no docks to cause adjacency problems, or on the down coast end of Coronadelmar Beach to replenish a very low and narrow beach over on our ocean front. So I think partnering with local residential communities and whatever other sources of sand we can find, and there are others in the harbor, is a really good approach to solving a lot of our problems. So, final slide. We've been working on the Upper Newport Bay ecosystem restoration project, and as you heard last time, it's a very important part of our comprehensive sediment management program, but it's only partially funded. Further funding of this project is not in the president's budget. This first phase of the project started with $16 million. The Corps has requested an additional $18 million. They think that's their capability for FY07, and we've got a big goose egg in the president's budget. So we've requested Senator Feinstein to help us with a congressional add to the federal budget. And so we're asking council members and the general public to help us to provide her and the Energy and Water Appropriations Committee members with ledgers indicating your support for continued funding of that Upper Bay project, and to reprogram funding of the maintenance project in the federal areas of the Lower Bay. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions? Mr. Selich.
You indicated the areas where the federal channels are, that I guess the federal government and the city in some combination are responsible for, and then the regional general permit, which I guess covers the areas between the pierhead lines back to the bulkhead lines for the residential properties and the commercial properties. But aren't there other areas of the bay that need to be dredged, too? Like I'm thinking, like the Center of Linda Isle that's outside the pierhead line, and who's responsible for those areas? And, you know, where, maybe you can highlight where those areas are.
Sure. Could you take me back to the Center of Linda Isle?
That's my understanding, yeah.
The Center of Linda Isle is actually the responsibility of the Linda Isle Homeowners Association. It's actually a private waterway. There are other areas of private waterway. The outside of the horseshoe at Linda Isle on these two sides, the north and the east side, are also private waterway belonging to the Irvine Company that is their responsible, responsibility to dredge. Promontory Bay is a private waterway, again, not city responsibility to dredge. This area, right in here on the south side of Linda Isle, is actually county tidlands, and is their responsibility to dredge. And they've recently performed hydrographic survey of that area, trying to put together a project. Newport Dunes is county tidlands and their responsibility to dredge. So there's quite a mixed bag. In the Lower Bay in general, though, about 16 to 20 feet bayward of the pierhead line is what the Army Corps calls their project line. And that's, from project line to project line within the harbor, is, in general, in the Lower Bay, the Army Corps' responsibility.
So do those, any of those private areas, they have to go get their own permit? They don't fall under our regional general permit? They have to go and do the long, two-year process, whatever it is?
Some of them, because of quantities, like the dunes typically, when they do a dredging project, it's close to 100,000 cubic yards, so it obviously doesn't fit within our quantity criteria. They do have to do an individual permit, and the Army, and the county is processing an individual permit for that right now. We've talked to the Linda Isle Homeowners Association about doing up to 500 cubic yards, because that's what our previous permit has had, dredging at a time, and just biting away at it a little bit at a time. So we've also had that conversation with the Channel Reef Homeowners Association, and Mark Seitz recently did two 500-yard projects for Channel Reef. So there's ways to do it within the regional general permit, and then if the quantities get too large, they have to go out for an individual permit.
Okay. Then you mentioned on the regional general permit that new dock standards, are those standards we've already adopted or we're contemplating adopting?
They have been approved by the Harbor Commission, and we've just had the building department finalize some minor changes to them, and we'll be bringing them to the council for approval sometime in March.
Okay. My last question is, who gave us the HAMP grant?
Department of Water Resources of the state of California.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, what is the practical effect of having a disruption in the funding, both on the Upper Bay and with the Lower Bay? If I heard correctly, we save about $1 million in mobilization costs by being able to continue the project with the equipment that's currently been deployed. But let's assume that we are unsuccessful in continuing federal funding at the schedule that we needed for both of the projects. What does that do to us?
One of the problems, other than the cost of mobilization and demobilization, is timing of the project. There are certain areas of the Upper Bay that are sensitive because of endangered species that we cannot dredge in those areas certain times of the year. So if the schedule is disrupted, then it could be out of sync by many months. The nesting season generally runs from March to September, and so that's quite a big chunk of the year that we would be out of sync in.
Thank you.
But couldn't they be dredging in the Lower Bay if
They could.
there was money available where that would allow them to keep their equipment in use year-round almost?
And that's our strategy, is keep them working while they're here and take care of all of the federal responsibility in the Upper and Lower Bay.
Councilmember Nichols, you had a question?
Yeah, the question I had is the Lower Bay that you're particularly showing eelgrass areas, is that sand, that sand is still good, though, for use on the beaches and so forth?
Yes. When we, back in 2003, dredged sand in the harbor entrance to remove the shoal in the entrance along the East Jedy, we took that, about 43,000 cubic yards out and dumped it in the nearshore zone adjacent to the West Newport Groin Field, and it got washed up on shore and was beneficial to replenishing the sand in West Newport.
Would there be, I'm still looking for sand for Coronadelmar Beach. My question is, is the state, help any on that? I mean, that's, is that the responsibility of the city or the state for? And I'd like to get some of that that's coming right from the other side of our groins and so forth, you know?
Sure.
I mean, I hate to lose all of that to other places.
Another project that I'm working on that I haven't updated you on yet is, as part of the coastal development permit for Newport Coast, the coastal commission required the Irvine Company to deposit about $180,000 into a beach replenishment fund. I've been in contact with coastal commission staff about using that as seed money for a beach replenishment project at Big Corona. The money can be spent from the East Jedy down to Abalone Point for any beach replenishment project. So certainly, the eastern portion of Coronadelmar Beach qualifies for that. In addition, I've talked to the Department of Boating and Waterways, who said that since it is a state beach operated by the city, that with that coastal commission seed money, they felt that they could contribute some money to a larger project on Coronadelmar Beach. So we're working on it, but we're not there yet.
Any other councilmembers? Just a quick thought. Is there any, would there be any merit to the idea of the city having their own dredging equipment? Kind of like, you know, how they paint the bridge up in San Francisco? They start at one end and they paint it all the way, and then they start over again?
Right.
And is there any, I mean, obviously, there's mobilization savings every time you mobilize and this and that, and maybe if we had our own equipment, a barge and a dredge that would just continually work in the bay and other areas that we have, obviously. I mean, is there any, was there ever been any thought for that?
There has been some thought, and there has been an interesting example that I've been following up in Santa Cruz Harbor, where the Army Corps wanted to buy their way out of maintenance dredging in Santa Cruz Harbor. And so they bought the harbor district a dredge, a tug, and a barge. And they trained, I think, three staff members and provided salary for them for, I believe, 10 years. And now, 20 years later, the equipment is in great disrepair. The city feels that they really got the short side of the stick on that one and very much regret that they made the deal with the Army Corps. It's a lot of upkeep, and you really need to keep that equipment busy. The city of Long Beach also has their own dredge. And I've tried to negotiate with them to see if they'd be willing to, when I was with the county, dredge Huntington Harbor for us, because it's just around the corner outside their breakwater for them to bring their equipment in. And they had about six months of downtime for their equipment, where they had their operators doing other things. And we could never come to terms because they didn't want to enter into a performance contract, that they wanted a time and materials contract, and we, of course, wouldn't agree to that. So... So there's a lot of disadvantages in municipalities owning their own equipment and keeping it busy, because there's so much lead time in getting the permits and getting everything coordinated to keep staff working.
Thank you.
We did own the dredge at one time, for the water department did, to dredge silt out of the bottom of the Big Canyon Reservoir. Thank you, Tom. I believe the next item on our agenda is dogs on the beach. Who's going to make that presentation?
Lieutenant Kaminski, from the Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. If I could just have a minute, I need to load up a CD for you.
Okay.
Mayor and members of the City Council, again, good afternoon. I think it's important to provide council with some background on our municipal ordinances that applies to animals in general, and dogs in specific, on our city beaches, both oceanfront and bay beaches. Prior to 1989, our ordinance prohibited animals and dogs on those beaches during the summer months between nine AM and five PM, and rough, summer months roughly June to September, depending on when school let out and when school began again back in the fall. And there was a lot of confusion on the part of the public, both residents and visitors who came down as to when the prohibition existed, was it summertime, was it wintertime, and a lot of those residents received citations from animal control officers. Council at the time realized the confusion and was driven by this to revise the ordinance and simplify it to what we have today, post-1989. The current ordinance allows for prohibition of dogs between nine AM and five PM every day of the year. There is no month or seasonal distinction on that prohibition at all. And I've attached to the staff report that you have the ordinance, and it does, it is not from 1989, it is 1996, which struck other elements of the ordinance, however, it does state quite succinctly the hours and when those prohibitions exist. Prior to the revision before 1989, we experienced some problems during winter months when we had warm weather. We just had such a period about three weeks ago here where temperatures reached the eighties. Dogs, of course, prior to 1989, in the wintertime, were allowed on the beaches during the day, between nine and five, and if you had temperatures that, you know, compelled people to go to the beach, our beach population swelled, we had the dogs down there, complaints of defecation, urination, dog versus dog incidents, dog versus human incidents rose. So we had a little more of a patrol and control issue at that point. We still see that, you know, like I said, about three weeks ago, we had some weather here that was in the eighties, we had a heavy beach, heavy beach couple of days, and had that ordinance been in effect at that time, or this time, we would have seen the same problems, I'm sure. Statistically speaking, for our Police Department, the, and the Animal Control Unit, forty-six point two percent of all beach violations, animal beach violations, excuse me, let me rephrase that, in 2005, animal beach violations accounted for forty-two, forty-six point two percent of all their site activity. Specifically regarding animals off-leash and animals on the beach during prohibited hours, animals off-leash represented twenty-three point three percent, or almost a quarter, of their site activity, and nineteen point nine percent were animals prohibited, on the beach during prohibited hours, almost twenty percent. I did say, a survey of our coastal cities and their prohibitions, or lack thereof, of animals on the beaches, and it's also included in the staff report, Dana Point, San Clemente, Seal Beach, and Huntington Beach have a complete prohibition of animals on the beaches all the time. Now, I've footnoted Huntington Beach, because as you're well aware, they have a section of beach that is known as Dog Beach, and I have a PowerPoint demonstration, if I could...
Sure, go ahead.
...light that up for you. On the screen is a aerial photo of Dog Beach, and it reaches from Seapoint Avenue to the north there, one mile, approximately one mile to the south to Twenty-first Street, Coast Highway, of course, bordering the ocean. And this area of beach is Huntington City. It allows dogs off-leash, however, there is no statutory exception in their ordinance for dogs to be off-leash here. Important thing to remember about this beach is that it's quite different than our beaches in Newport Beach. We don't, here, we don't have any residences, while we have about fifty yards of residential area. There's above Coast Highway, twenty to thirty-foot bluffs, beyond the Coast Highway, there's an old oil field, and on top of those bluffs, there's parking lots, and that's it. There's three entrances to get onto the Dog Beach. On the weekends, the entrances are manned by volunteers of the Dog Beach Association. They are there to make sure, they're kind of like overseers of the beach, and they hand out dog bags, dog waste bags, et cetera, answer any questions that beachgoers may have. This is a sign at the Dog Beach, you can see that the first little bullet there says, "Keep your dog on a leash." Again, there's no statutory exemption at this beach, however, we'll see in a video here in a minute, the dogs do run free down there. This is another sign that I found interesting. It's a sign that allows you to sign up for some free pet liability insurance, and that indicates to me that they've had issues down there relative to possibly dog bites, fights, et cetera.
Jim, were you assuming then that they don't sign for dogs off-leash there?
The Huntington, the city of Huntington Beach contracts with the Orange County Animal Control Authority to do all their animal services. I contacted them in Orange County State, that they will not go down there and even enforce this portion of the beach unless called to, in a very rare circumstance, by the Huntington Beach Police Department. This is a city of Huntington Beach sign, it prohibits certain acts, number two, dogs not restrained by a six-foot leash. Another city of Huntington Beach sign, this is all at the Dog Beach that we showed on the aerial, the first one, dogs must be on a six-foot leash, and dogs must pick up, or dog owners must pick up after their pets. And then, you know, this gets into some, these photos were taken by an animal control officer, and there are some pictures here, and I try to keep them to a minimum, but they're a bit of, a bit offensive. Some dog waste, this is what we found down at the Huntington Beach. We also had a video that was taken by an animal control officer this past Saturday in this area of the Dog Beach, and I understand that the council is, may not be interested in having a full, free-leash beach here in the city. However, it is illustrative of some of the problems that you may encounter down at the Dog Beach and Huntington Beach, and we can play the video here. And again, I apologize, this was a video that was shot by an animal control officer, who had some problems with his focus on it, so it does go in and out of focus, but I think he'll get the message. And there is no sound of this. Now, the dogs, by rule, if you will, are supposed to only be off-leash at the wet sand line and leashed on the dry sand line. So as you're watching, you can clearly see, and I've seen it myself personally, as soon as the dogs hit the top of the bluff, the leash comes off, and we're off to the races. I think it's important, on this day, this is a, this is last Saturday, as a matter of fact, and I'm sure you're well aware of the weather conditions on that day, it was hazy sunshine, kind of breezy, not cool, but not warm day either. There's about, I'm told by the officer that shot, there's seventy-five to one hundred animals on the beach. This is a good shot of what the beach looks like with the animals and people present. People picking the leash off right there, the foot of the bluff. Excretia problems again. These are the signs that we took the stills of before, picking no dogs off a leash, and Again, in the dry sand area. So in the interest of time, the tape goes on for nine minutes, I think that...
Yeah, we don't need nine minutes of it.
Counsel, that's the message you're... Yes. Okay. The, obviously, we have environmental concerns for our beaches with the dog waste. Citizens are easily monitored, we can pick up, or watch them, and enforce picking up solid waste. The liquid waste, impossible to monitor, how much is going into the sand, it's impossible to pick up. When the animal has the urge, you know, it's going to go, whether it's on the beach or wherever, and usually, they do it on the beach, because it's, you know, a housebroken animal usually, and it's not going to go in the house. The other environmental concern is the snowy plover, and council's well aware of the habitats and issues concerning the snowy plover. Now, the ordinance that revised or unrevised is not going to affect animals disturbing the snowy plover. If a dog goes onto the beach in a dune area and the snowy plover is nesting there, it's going to disturb it. However, it is interesting to note that in May, which would be before the wintertime or the summertime restrictions, that is the nesting period where that's when the snowy plovers lay their eggs, so it's a more sensitive time. So, you know, prior to 1989, we had an ordinance that allowed dogs on the beach during the daytime, during nesting time. Huntington Beach is the only other city besides Newport Beach that allows dogs and other animals on the beach during, or prohibits them during summer months. They have an ordinance that is very, very similar, almost identical, to the one we had prior to 1989, with the exception of one hour. They allow, or prohibit...
You're talking about Laguna Beach?
Yes, I'm sorry, Laguna Beach. I probably did. Laguna Beach prohibits the animals on the beach during the summertime, again, June to September, or roughly the school schedule, between hours of eight AM and five PM. I called Laguna Beach, I talked with one of their elder animal control officers, Joyce Falk. She says that they have similar problems that we had when, prior to the revision of our ordinance, they have a contentious relationship, as she calls it, between people who live on the bluffs above Laguna Beach and the dog owners who like to have their dogs run free, or at least on a leash at that point. It got to the point where this particular animal control officer is responsible for the creation of the dog park in Laguna Canyon. She also told me that their citizens have similar confusion about, you know, what months you can have the dog out there during the daytime, what months you can't have them out during the daytime, they have the excretia problems. They cite about twelve people a year for leaving dog waste on the beach, and it sounds like a low number. I asked her why it's such a low number, and they have, they are very, very careful to follow their code in such a way that, they don't want anything, any tickets lost in court. They actually watch the, the dog, you know, lay the waste, if you will, they watch the owner walk away, maybe make a, you know, an action where he's looking around, has a dog waste bag in his hand but doesn't use it. They want that type of evidence. If they don't have that, they don't write the citation, they write a warning. They've had approximately twenty dog versus dog attacks, or dog versus human attacks in Laguna Beach also. So it's a comparison that I wanted to make, they had, we had an ordinance very similar to this, like I said, with the exception of one hour. With that, I'll take any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Rosansky?
We don't have any video of the Laguna Beach, though, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. And we don't ban the dogs in our parks, do we?
No.
And we potentially would have this...
There are some parks that, I guess, parks that are adjacent to school grounds, dogs are banned.
Right, and, yes, sir, and Laguna also bans them from their play equipment on beaches or near beaches.
Okay, so we have the same, I guess, issue with dog excrement or dog off-leash in parks and other places? I mean, these people are walking their dogs somewhere, they're going to the bathroom somewhere, unless they're keeping them all locked in their house, I mean, so, and our previous law did not allow the dogs off the leash?
That's correct.
And we do permit dogs on the beach after five and before nine?
That is correct.
In the winter month, or...
Every day of the year.
Every day of the year. So, I mean, if excrement and leash problems, I mean, then we probably should be banning it all year round, I would imagine.
Yeah, and council at the time wanted to provide for a cleaner atmosphere during the day when most of the people frequented the beach. That's why the...
Well, the dog excrement doesn't walk away.
I know that, but...
On its own.
It's more, I guess it's more offensive when somebody's laying on the beach and it happens in front of them.
I see. Well, I guess I don't really have any more, I mean, so in your opinion, this is an undesirable thing for our beaches, is that the point of view?
I think what council's intention was back in 1989 was to simplify this ordinance, and to prohibit dogs on the beach during the daytime hours every day of the year, because prior to 1989, we allowed them during the wintertime, between nine AM, five PM.
I remember.
Okay. We had problems on warm days, or we still had people on the beach, we had lots of people on the beach, even when the beach was, you know, partially, on a, kind of a cool winter day, you still had people on the most popular beaches at Corona del Mar, at the West Oceanfront Lot.
Yeah, granted, those days that, I mean, that people go to the beach.
I believe that was the intent of council at the time, just to limit the number of animals on the beach to when people, the most people will not be there.
I see.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
Well, if, if anybody's looking for correction, I support the Police Department and prior council's actions, I think it's appropriate. I know the chief and Officer, Lieutenant Kaminski and myself have had correspondence in the past, since I represent the peninsula, and I think it's a fine policy, or I think it's a fine ordinance as currently written.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sillage?
Yeah, just as a point of information, the Balboa Island Improvement Association is going to be sending the City Council a letter requesting that dogs be prohibited on the beaches at all times, on the beaches on Balboa Island, they just feel that the beaches are too small, and, and the, I guess, the density of dogs, if you will, causes a lot of problems out there, so, just to let you know, that'll become...
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Counsel, please, Jim.
Counselor...
I was simply going to say that I echo Counsel Member Ridgeway's comments, I think it was an excellent presentation on documenting the effect of this ordinance, and I certainly see that the status quo is a fine ordinance and should stay in place.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is insurance renewals.
Mr. Mayor, we have two items on the regular agenda tonight, but we thought it would be a good opportunity, since timing is very important here in our... a good opportunity since timing is very important here in order to get new policies into effect to provide an overview of the three items on the agenda at study session. So Barbara Ramsey, who is the HR Director, will start us out, and Lauren Farley, our risk manager, is also a part of the presentation.
Okay, well, I kind of hate to follow those cute little puppy dogs because this is kind of a boring subject, but we're going to make it interesting.
Excuse me for just a minute. I made an error again. We didn't ask for public comments on the dog issue. So let's back up.
Okay.
And we'll start again. I'm sorry to do this to you. Was there somebody like to comment on the dog issue? I apologize for overlooking that.
Mayor Webb and counsel, my name is John Cunningham. I am here actually at the request of Al Schonk, who's the president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association, but couldn't be here tonight. The principal thing that I was going to talk about is what Counsel Manzalich has just stated, which was that by somewhat of a coincidence at our meeting last Thursday night, 23rd, I believe it was, by unanimous vote, the board of directors of the Balboa Island Improvement Association instructed the president to send to you people a letter requesting that if there's going to be some changes of some kind in the, in the dogs on the beach situation that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, dogs be prohibited from Balboa Island beaches. We feel that they are very unique as opposed to the ocean beaches, which are 50, 100 yards wide, totally different state of affairs. The, my observation, we live on the east bayfront on Little Balboa Island, and we spend a lot of time sitting out in the front drinking coffee and watching the sun come up and so forth, and the, a big, big problem there, very candidly, is a lack of enforcement of the rules as they exist today. Dogs are running all over the beaches. Six-foot leashes, a laugh. 50% of the people walking their dogs on the, on the walkway, I would estimate, have 25 or 30-foot roll-up leashes. That's another, another issue. But I, my principal reason in being here was to advise you, as I said, that the board of directors of Balboa Island Improvement Association feels very strongly that we don't want dogs, period, on the beaches there. They're unique, they're, they're much smaller than the beaches on the ocean beaches, and a letter is going to be coming to you requesting just that. There are, I took, I took as recently as this morning some pictures of some of the old instruction, whatever they are, the rules, rules and regulations about what you can have on the beach, no alcohol, no picnics, no, no dogs. And the old ones, apparently prior to 1989, said amongst all these other no, no, nos, no dogs. So anyway, that's all I have to say, but we feel very strongly on Balboa Island that we do not wish to have dogs, period, on the beaches.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of John? Okay, thank you.
Just a moment, you understand this is a study session, we take no action, but send your letter, okay?
It'll be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Barbara, I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but.
That's okay, the dogs come first, right? No, that's okay.
Not necessarily.
They're so cute.
Keep you on short leash.
Yes. Well, for those of you that I've not had the pleasure of meeting, I'm Barbara Ramsey. I'm the new human resources director. I've been here for approximately seven months, but I brought two experts with me on this issue. I brought Mark Zahory in, he's our broker from Brown and Brown, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about the process on renewing our insurances. And Lauren Farley, who's been with the Human Resources Department for 12 years, who has been coming to you every year with these renewals. We do do this every year, but we thought it would be a good idea to kind of let you know what the processes we go through because it's pretty extensive, there's a lot of background, and it's a pretty costly budget item, so we wanted to kind of explain it to you. We have three items on the agenda today. They're on the consent item, eight, nine, and 10. The first one is general liability, and basically we're self-insured for general liability up to $500,000 and then up to a million dollars for employment practices, to a maximum of $26 million. So we pay for that insurance, we pay for everything that's below that, that's within the SIR ourselves. Then the second item on the agenda is the workers' comp excess. We also are self-insured for workers' compensation, and we pay all claims, we have an SIR up to a million dollars. So the insurance only kicks in after a million dollars per claim. The third item is all of the property that we own in Newport Beach, and you have a, there's a list, there's a chart behind telling which insurance we have for which properties. It's a little bit different this year, we have added the Mariners Library, and we have combined a couple of insurances with the peers that Mark will talk to you a little bit about. He's negotiated that. So as I said before, although we bring this every year, there's a lot of negotiations and things that go on to bring you the best coverage for the least cost. And I've met with Mark several times this year, just since I've been here, and I feel real confident that he does get us the best price and the best insurance and that he really knows his business. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Mark. You have an agenda in front of you that he prepared on the things he's going to talk about, and then after that, Lauren's going to follow up with any details on the memos or answer any questions that you may have. With that, I'll turn the time over to Mark.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mark Zahory, Senior Vice President for Brown and Brown. And since the last time I approached the council, there are two new members, I wanted to give a brief overview of who Brown and Brown is. We're a publicly traded company. We have 150 locations in about 33 states. We're the eighth largest broker in the United States, ninth in the world. And I've been with Brown and Brown, as I mentioned, 22 years, but more importantly, I've been the broker for the city for over 15 years. So I feel I know the city very well, and through that, the presentation I would like to give you this afternoon is a brief overview. The intent is to give you a brief overview of what we go through every year to negotiate insurance for the city. The marketing process, we start approximately 120 days gathering statistical underwriting information. That's basically updating your property schedules, updating applications for various insurance companies, and identifying any significant changes or exposures that the city may have during that last year period. That would be more helpful for the council also to understand what the exposures are and also to implement the program. Approximately December, we started the submission process. We do that typically 90 days before renewal, and we go to the various companies. Now, when I say go to, we do not just send written submissions out to carriers. We have face-to-face meetings and really identify who the players are and what we need to do to entice other players to really come to the table and look at the insurance program for the city. In January, typically what I do 45 days before the actual process, I come in and I talk to staff and really identify where we're at in the marketplace, where I originally thought we were going to be, and where, in actuality, where we're going to be as far as the insurance program. And then the week of February 6th, typically we go out three weeks roughly before renewal and go to the key players that we know are going to be the bottom-line markets we're going to go with. And I do that so staff meets the underwriters, and if we have any additional room for premium reductions, we typically accomplish it in those meetings. Face-to-face interaction with the underwriters by staff is very helpful in those final negotiation stages. Now, market conditions. Every year, the market conditions are really different. And this year, we had a combination of stable and unstable markets. And the general liability is a very stable market right now. For all practical purposes, we were expecting a flat rate and premium to a slight increase. Excess workers' compensation, little different. It's different for private industry than it is for municipalities. Private industry, we're seeing greater reductions in rate than we do in cities. Cities, the primary reason is because of the catastrophic exposure, concentration of employees in various facilities. And because of Katrina, insurance companies and reinsurers are very sensitive to that catastrophic loss. So with, with the workers' comp, I was expecting basically a flat to a 10% decrease in rate. Now, when I discuss rate, it's rate per exposure, not necessarily premium, and I'll show the differentiation later on. Property insurance, I'm basically dividing it into two areas. Our master property policy excluding the peers and without the coverage for earthquake and flood, we're expecting, did expect basically a flat rate on that. The market is pretty stable when it comes to that area of property. The next area where we needed to make some improvements, where I was very concerned, was the earthquake and flood program overall and including the overall program for the peers. What is happening, when I mention Katrina, the catastrophic loss and what occurred in the South caused a lot of pain for not only insurance companies but reinsurers. And what that means is when dealing with catastrophic loss, the insurance companies want to make sure they really have sufficient funds to overcome a situation like what happened in the South. So with that, we were seeing increases in January from 15% to 25%. And I was really concerned because we have a high concentration of risk, also because of the peers, the issue of flood and wave wash concerned many insurers and underwriters. Going to item four, market conditions, expectations really reflect how I choose the markets and where we go to. Excess general liability, we have a very, very exceptional rate. We've been with, insurance company has stayed at the Pennsylvania for three years now, going on our fourth year, extremely competitive in the marketplace, 120 days out, I determined there were no other key players that were going to make a significant difference in rate. So then our energies really went to the excess workers' comp and the property. Excess workers' comp, even though I knew I was going to get a reduction, I wanted to take advantage of the leveraging of markets, and I went to six key markets that play in this area. Now, as we all know, there are hundreds of carriers that do business in workers' compensation in the state of California, not for cities. So the markets that we went to, day in and day out, right coverage for workers' compensation for cities. When it was all said and done, the reflection or decrease that we got was really due to that marketing procedure and really going and leveraging what other carriers could do for us. The property, because of the increase that I was expecting, I went to 15 markets, I went to all of them and met with many of them. There were a few I didn't meet with because I knew they were going to be wild cards, they typically work on a very lower level of coverage, but I still didn't want to leave them out. And after that whole process came our results. And I was very pleased with the results because the premium on the excess liability came in exactly what we thought. The insurance company first had a slight increase in premium over last year, and it was due to an increase in exposure, your exposure-based reliability's population. Explained to them, 3,000 different, you know, more people in the city of Newport Beach, give me a break, do not increase the premium. They agreed, so we kept the premium flat. Excess workers' comp, we obtained a slight decrease in premium after an 8% increase in payroll. So a slight decrease in actual premium, what that means is effectively a 9% rate reduction. So I was very pleased with that and exceeded staff's expectations and my own expectations also. As far as property, bottom line is we had a 12% premium increase. When it's all said and done, it's, it's very complicated, but the actual rate increase was approximately 7.7%, call it 8%. So, and most of that was due to the effect on DIC. The sole reason why we were able to keep that in line and not the 15, 20, 25% increase that I originally expected was to how we now ensure, if you approve, the peers. Before, we had various carriers on what I called the special risk, which would be fire, all risk except for earthquake and flood, and incorporated the earthquake and flood into this new program and incorporated the wave wash also. So with all that, from what we expected in premium, it came in at about $45,000 lower or really about the same premium we paid last year. That means we have to change carriers, which is still a very strong carrier, but that is my recommendation, and that's why we were able to keep the premiums where we did. With that, any questions?
Does counsel have any questions? Mr. Curry?
Mr. Mayor. Mark, you noted the reduction in our workers' comp premium. How much of that do you believe is attributable to the reforms the governor implemented a couple of years ago in this area?
I would say overall, industry-wide, it had a significant effect, it really did, because it really set, set the stage and gave the insurance companies opportunities to legitimately go in and lower the premiums. So as it affects the city's workers' comp, it, it had an impact.
And to ask the question sort of in a mirror image, as you're aware, there's efforts afoot in Sacramento to undo some of those reforms, is it likely that if those are successful, that would result in an increased premium to the city?
If I had a gristle ball, I could, I could probably answer it better. In my personal opinion, I say not for the next 24 to 36 months. What's going to happen is since the insurance industry has, in underwriting, has basically chose their position, and if they have underwriting results that can support that, meaning loss ratios that are within line of their own profitability as a company, they're going to keep their rating the same. If those changes basically cause increases in claims and increases in payouts, that's when you're going to get a change, and you're going to get increases.
And then one last question, we're retaining a million dollars of retainage, I guess, or of liability. How does that compare with other comparable cities?
In, on workers' comp?
Well, on all of these, I think in our liability, we've got quite a hell of a million dollars of retained self-insurance.
On liability, it's $500,000 with the exception of employment practices liability. For the most part, for a city your size, it's very comparable. Smaller cities have, we insure some cities that have a $50,000 retention on liability and probably have a 50, I would say between 50 to 350,000 retention on workers' comp. But again, it's much smaller cities. So to answer your question, for a city your size, this is definitely in line.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? I might give.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Sellige.
Maybe you're not the person to answer it, maybe it's one of the staff, but what do we typically pay out in worker comp claims in a year? Maybe, maybe it isn't typical. Maybe there's some big ones and small ones.
Well, there's no typical year, per se. And for those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Lauren Farley, I'm the risk manager. On workers' compensation, last year we paid about, for the claims that were filed in that fiscal year, we paid about $980,000. Those, that doesn't take into account those claims from prior years that we're still paying on, so.
Is that a typical year or a big year or a small year?
It's about, it's about average for us, it's about average. We have. We have, claim-wise, let me grab that.
I was going to ask you, how many claims does that translate?
In 04, 05 fiscal year, we had 147 claims. We range between about 125 to 100, you know, 60. Sometimes, an employee may file multiple claims, multiple body parts, that will get a master file, but it still can count as additional claims for those body parts depending on the, on the nature of the injury. Currently, we have 112 claims in this fiscal year. So, 05, 06, at the end of January, we've filed 112 claims. Now, that varies depending on the demographics of our employee population. It certainly varies within our safety population, our police and fire, and it can vary depending on whether or not we have multiple claims arising from one incident. If we have a lot of employees that, let's say, a fire or a police action, that could change that mix as well.
Do they typically mostly come from the safety employees versus the operational employees?
The three operating centers, we get most of our claims from, our police, fire, and general services. We have some from utilities, an occasional claim coming from recreation, and an occasional claim coming from administrative departments, you know, like administrative services or... Never had a claim from the city clerk, didn't want to cover her out. But, you know, so mostly from the administrative-type office jobs, we typically get very few.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren, are, am I right in saying that some of those claims don't result in any lost work time and don't result, result in any workers' comp being paid out to those employees?
Typically, we'll have two different types of claims. We'll have medical-only claims where the employee goes for medical treatment only, doesn't have any time loss from work, for example, has some stitches, a laceration, cutting open a box of materials or something, they get a couple stitches, and they're back at work, and they don't have any time loss. Most are time-loss cases, unless it's catastrophic, meaning greater than six months, are typical time-loss cases within the five-to-10-week period, so. And those do happen with those class, job classifications that have more opportunity for physical activity. In general services in particular, our refuse division, they're throwing trash all day long, that's probably one of the heaviest jobs we have in the city, not to take anything away from police and fire, but that, they're doing that day in and day out, so.
Okay. I might remind the counsel that items eight, nine, and 10 on the consent calendar are the items that we're discussing right now, so if you have any questions that you might ask tonight, you might get the answer to earlier and leave it on the consent calendar. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this? Seeing no one.
Oh, she's a little scared of hell.
That's right. Does the counsel have any, any other questions related to insurance? Okay, then, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
Counselmember Rosansky and Nichols came in after we talked about the clarifications of item on the consent calendar. Do either one of you have any items you need to have clarified?
None, thank you.
Mr. Nichols? Good. Public comments are invited non-adjourned items. I see no one wishing to do that, so we are adjourned until the regular meeting at 7:00.